Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Columbus City Council regular meeting. The time is 6:00 P. M. The date is July 23, 2025. And the first thing on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we start tonight, I just, I know a lot of us attended the planning commission last week. If we can all speak into the microphones a little louder, I sat in the back and I, people were approaching me and just so we just keep that aware. And even people that get up and talk, if you really talk into the microphone, so everybody in the back can hear. So, thank you. We'll go on to the second item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda tonight. Anybody?
So, this is Janet. I would move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay.
This is Jenny. I second.
Any discussion, any questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Scott, aye.
And Ron, aye. Motion passes. We'll go on to the item B, the consent agenda. Anybody want to make a motion on that?
So, this is Janet. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented in item B two of the July 23, 2025 city council meeting agenda.
Rob will second.
We've got a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Any questions, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Scott, aye.
And Ron, aye. The motion passes. We'll go on to item number C. And the first item on the thing is a public forum. And just to let everybody know, the council will listen to the issues but will not engage in dialogue with the presenter. Questions from the council will be for clarification only. The public forum will not be used as a time for problem solving or reacting to the comments made, but rather for hearing the citizens for informational purposes only. Anybody in the office, uh, office, anybody in the room here would like to get up and say anything on the open forum? Having nobody here, anybody online? Nobody's come forth. We'll close the open forum and go on to the first item on the gen, second item on the agenda, 2024 audit, city audit report by L. B. Carlson, pages 16, and enclosure. And Jim, you want to come up and give your presentation?
Absolutely. Mayor, members of council, my name is Jim Ickton. I'm with L. B. Carlson CPAs as they work to get my PowerPoint up on the present, on the board here. I'll introduce myself. I'm, again, Jim Ickton with L. B. Carlson. Just so everybody is aware, recently, January 1st, our firm merged with L. B. Carlson. I was previously with MMKR CPAs. Our entire firm merged with L. B. Carlson. So, the audit was engaged through L. B. Carlson, but it was pretty much the same team, my whole entire team merged with L. B. Carlson. And it's been excellent for our firm and it offers quite a bit more resources for our company as well as for the city. So, everything's working well in that, from that sense. My goal this evening is to present the audit results for the year ended December 31, 2024 for the city. I do have a PowerPoint. Cheryl, are you?
Yep.
You're manning. Thank you for taking care of me, as usual. So, the goal of the presentation is to go through the results of the audit. It is a requirement in state law that the city prepare an annual financial statement. That financial statement was issued in June and submitted to the Office of the State Auditor. The goal and the role of the auditor is to issue an opinion on that financial statements that is required to be prepared by the city. We are also, as part of our audit process, required to audit your internal controls as it relates to financial activities. We're also required to complete an audit of your Minnesota statutes. Those laws that pertain to the city are audited by us, but we don't audit every law, just the law that, the laws that are on the list provided by the Office of the State Auditor here in the state of Minnesota. We are also required to audit your federal awards using what's a tool called the single audit if you were to receive more than $750,000 of federal dollars. That did not occur. So, we do audit the federal dollars that you get under government audit standards, but not the federal standard, which was not required this year. So, moving on, I was able to issue what's called an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. It was the opinion you were looking for, basically defined as a clean opinion, better, better terminology than unmodified. So, we were able to issue a good opinion this year on the financial statements. As you can see, we did issue one item, what I would call a reportable item, on the city's internal controls. You have an inherent, I'll call it, limited segregation of duties in your internal control system. We report that in the report, that it isn't under definitions perfectly segregated. But we also issue an opinion that it is, it does have adequate compensating controls. You have controls in place to compensate for the limited limitations you're under. So, I always report that to the city council in this report. I don't really call it a finding, I call it a reportable item. It's really in the, the report, and you'll state that there isn't any corrective action to take. You have the right controls in place needed for a city your size, and we don't make any recommendations for change related to that reportable item. Otherwise, you'll note that there weren't any other internal control findings or recommendations, a clean report in that area. Lastly, as it relates to our opinion on your Minnesota legal compliance, I mentioned, we, we did our testing and did not have any findings to report in that area as well. So, all in all, from the compliance areas, we didn't have any findings at all. Well done. Excellent work on the part of the city and the staff at the, at the city that does all the work related to this particular financial statement. So, in my report that was issued, we do issue some financial information, really the financial information that's provided us to give you some sort of sense for the financial results, looking for trend information, really just making observations related to the financial condition of the city. You can see on that particular presentation, which is in my management report, overall the, the city's fund balance, which is the equity position at the end of the year, increased about $300,000 when you add up all of the governmental funds of the city. The city's general fund, which is the main fund of the city, did decline about $260,000, but most of that, if not all of that, was related to transfers that occurred that were taking some of the general fund dollars and moving it to other funds. Almost $500,000 of the, of, of transfers were made. Most of those dollars are actually sitting there in non-major funds. You can see the, the non-major fund balance increased almost $900,000. So, overall, the general, the general fund of the city, if you take out the $500,000 transfer, did show an increase in fund balance, an increase in fund balance position. Overall, you can see some of the other funds there. The activities are very typical for funds. You know, debt service funds tend to mimic the debt service payments. Capital can go up and down depending on project activity. So, no concerning results to, to note there. I think the next presentation shows the general fund financial position in a, in a five-year graph. We, in this particular presentation, we're showing the city's fund balance, again, the equity position of the city's general fund at the end of the year, as well as cash balance for the last four years. Overall, you can see that that fund balance did decline, as I mentioned. The city's budget projected an increase of about $190,000. And when you take away the transfers, the fund balance increased just slightly more than that. So, the budget for the city was mimicked quite well in terms of the financial results, which is really, from an auditing standpoint, exactly what I'm looking for. You want to see, you know, those budget to actual results be close to projections, meaning you're really monitoring the, the budget and the spending as you would expect. So, financial results are quite, quite, quite good. On the bottom of that particular presentation, well, it's not actually on the presentation, but one item of importance is the city has a goal to maintain a fund balance of roughly 50% of your operating budget. And, and really, that's needed for cash flow purposes. You're really only getting property tax settlements a couple of times a year, so you need almost 50% fund balance to operate your city. At the end of the year, the fund balance of the city's general fund was about 165% of operations. So, you're, you're meeting the expectations, if not exceeding the expectations, in terms of financial equity in your general fund. So, moving on to the next graph, we do show some more information on general fund revenues. At the end of the day, the, the general fund revenues were about $100,000 less than budgeted. Most of that was in property taxes, which were lower than anticipated. If you look at the presentation, which is on that particular graph, what stands out is the intergovernmental revenue line. You can see intergovernmental revenue went from $960,000 to $50,000 this year. Most of that was really related to one-time grants that, from the previous year, public safety, state aid, and there was some federal aid for broadband project that were one-time items. The next graph shows the expenditures. Here, you can see that overall, the city's expenditures were $2.9 million, which is about $200,000 under budget. Again, from a auditor standpoint, that's sort of music to my ears, just slightly under budget for the year. You're monitoring your expenditures quite well. Most of that was related to unfilled positions, but also some contingencies that were built into the budget that weren't, were not utilized. Again, what you see there on that particular graph, one item that stands out is the capital outlay line. Again, you had some one-time capital outlay items in 2023 that did not occur again this year. Moving to the next graph, the last two, one more, Cheryl. There we go. The city also has two enterprise funds. Enterprise funds would be considered business operations type of operations. Pretty much, in this case, it's the water in the sewer fund of the city. At the end of the day, those fund balance positions were pretty much unchanged. They're declined roughly $40,000. Those particular funds do, do, you know, go up and down depending on capital items and capital spending as well, so nothing concerning there. If you look at the next graph, you can see, here's your water fund. The water fund at the end of the day was very, very close to expectations. At the end of the year, the unrestricted net position, the equity position of that fund is sitting at about $1.2 million, which is a good place to be from an equity position. And that can be said also for the sewer fund, which is this graph. The sewer fund did see some decline in financial results this year, showing a decrease in, in fund balance of about $94,000. Almost $70,000 was related to repairs. And repairs can come and go depending on life and, and things that happen in the real world. So, those are one-time expenses that ultimately probably won't recur, reholt, they don't reoccur again next year. So, this, the last couple of graphs we have on the presentation, the, the overall general fund financial statements, the government-wide financial statements are shown here. We don't really look at these too close, but it does give you a sense for how well the city is doing. From one year to the next, the city's overall financial position improved almost $3.7 million, which is, you went from roughly 40, was it 42 million to 45 million in one year, which includes a lot of things. But ultimately, when you look at that number, you can really get a sense for the strength of the city's financial results this particular year. Last couple of slides, it is important to understand that there are a lot of accounting and auditing updates that are happening, and a lot of accounting and auditing issues that we have to deal with. This past year, we dealt with accounting standard related to compensated absences. There's another accounting standard on, on group capital assets that we issued, that we dealt with last year. Next year, we're going to be dealing with accounting standards on, on risk disclosures. Just bringing it up from the standpoint of the, the accounting, the, the importance of the accounting staff here at the city, the, the governmental accounting standards are not easy, and they're complex, and having the right personnel in place to have successful audits is really important. And you have that with, in my opinion, here on staff. So, that's an important element of this audit as well. So, last, my last slide here, in summary, I was able to issue a clean opinion on the city's financial statements, which is what the opinion you were looking for. We had that one item on segregation of duties, which doesn't change anything, no recommendations, no other findings to report. I did report the improvement in the general fund, fund balance, albeit declined, most of that was related to transfers to other funds. You're adhering to that fund balance policy you have, having adequate fund balance in your general fund. We showed the slight decline in the enterprise fund operations, nothing to be concerned about there. And then lastly, I just want to state, you know, we feel as a firm that the city is really committed to the audit process. The results show that and reflect that. We don't always see that. We get commitment from the city council. People, people are committed to our success, the city administrator, and everybody here is really willing to make sure that this goes off well. And, and we, I want to report that to the council as part of my last statement. So, with that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have for me.
Anybody have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
I have one question. First of all, I want to thank Jack and Cheryl, because I know you've been working on this audit for a long time, really hard. So, kudos to you that we, we got the great report that, that we do. My question has to do with the fund balance. So, I remember last year, you had made a similar observation that we had a pretty healthy balance in our, in our funds. And I remember talking about that because I think some of us weren't, didn't like the sort of perception that we were sitting on money, taxpayer money. And so, I'm kind of looking at any one of you three to comment back. I remember there was an explanation for it. I thought some of it had to do with the transfers that happened, that there were money, there were money sitting in the general fund that really needed to be in other funds, and it sounds like those funds got transferred. We're still pretty healthy over that. I mean, I don't want to be at 50%, but I don't think I want to be three times over that. So, can you help me get my head wrapped around that? Is there other circumstances that we're not hearing about that, that explains why that's so, so high?
So, my budget packet that I handed out the last meeting, it shows our cash fund balance as of May 2025. In total, we have 165%, but it's broken out between our general fund, our general city of, you know, city fund. Public Works is in there, public safety is included, and also our park fund. So, when we're looking at the budget later on, I would ask you to refer back to this because this is a more detailed look at that total fund balance. And if anybody needs a copy, I can get you a copy before we start working on budget tonight.
So, I'm still, it's still confusing to me. I mean, because most of those funds that you talked about, it looked like we were pretty lined up with budget. So, I'm still not understanding where the, where the excess balance is coming from.
So, from prior years, we did have excess balances. I cannot speak to why that happened. So, for example, our public works fund right now, Fund 120, our year-to-date balance is That's just money that was budgeted in prior years, but we did not spend all of the budgeted money. I don't know why, Janet, why, you know, maybe projects were canceled or we had to delay projects. Jim isn't here. I'm sure he could give a more detailed explanation. Public safety, we have $639,000 sitting in that fund. You know, maybe that could go down when we look at the budget. You know, we could look to see what 50% of our budget would be, and we could reduce our levy by that amount. I think as we dig deeper into the budget process, we can try to adjust, you know, so that we are sitting at that 50% for each type.
And I think that's a really great idea, that we talk about it in the, in the budgeting process. I think, you know, in the past, what we haven't seen in the budgeting process is the revenue side of things. We always are focusing on the expense. Here's all our expenses from last year. Does this have to go up or down? And when we talked about, you know, carryforward balances and stuff like that, that information was never really provided to us. So, I think that we need to change that because I think that's too big of a cushion to be sitting on. And I, I'm glad that those transfers happened last year, that got some of that into the right funds. But we, we need to have that be one of our goals during the budgeting process this year.
Is that it?
Isn't that enough? Yes.
Jenny, you have anything?
No, this is, this is great. Thank you again.
Scott, do you have anything?
Nothing from me. Thanks.
I'd like to add one thing, Mr. Mayor, and the kudos to staff. Cheryl's name should have been before mine.
No. I, I mean, I, Cheryl, I know how much time you have spent on this, and really, the sort of welcoming feel that you get, it, it's because Cheryl understands how important this is. So, we are, we are lucky to have her as our finance director.
I agree with that 100%. I think we're sitting in good hands. But did he use that on Allstate? I don't have any other questions, Jim. Anybody else have any questions? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
The next item on the list is Anoka County Sheriff's Office, 2025 Second Quarter Report, page 17. And welcome, Lieutenant. It's Matt, right?
Yeah, Matt.
You got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council, mayor, city staff. As Mayor Hennegraph said, I'm Jessica Slavik. I'm a lieutenant with the Anoka County Sheriff's Office, and it's also my privilege to be our liaison between my office and the city of Columbus. With me tonight, I also have Deputy Matthew Bertina. Many of you have met him before, but I just wanted to reintroduce him, and I find it helpful to have him here. He can sometimes offer answers that I don't have or additional insight on questions. Before we get started with our stats and calls for service, I did just want to share some general updates. The first is that Night to Unite is coming up here on Tuesday, August 5. This event is designed to bring neighbors together and really strengthen community police relationships. So, I encourage the community, if anybody is having a party, to register with the sheriff's office, especially if you want to guarantee that police and fire will visit the, the party. We have a form on our website where you can register your party. You don't have to, but I encourage people to. I also just wanted to give a reminder that our office does do vacation property checks. I know we haven't had any burglaries in this second quarter, but if you are going to be out of town for an extended period of time, the website, under the service tab, there's a form. So, if you're going to be out of town, basically, you fill out that form, and deputies will frequently stop by the residence, they'll walk the perimeter, make sure that they don't see anything suspicious, look for attempted forced entry, our forced entry, and then if they do find anything, they will call. So, it's not a surprise when you get home, or they get a, a little bit better jump start on an investigation versus waiting and it being a delayed, a delayed report. I'm also excited to share that our office has partnered with Anoka County Community Social Services and Behavioral Health, and we now have an embedded social worker at the sheriff's office. Her name is Ricky Thompson, and she is a licensed independent clinical social worker. So, she'll basically be responding to crisis calls with our deputies. She'll be connecting families with services and then following up with some aftercare after those calls. So, I just wanted to kind of illustrate just the sheer volume of these types of calls because mental health is a community problem. In just the first half of 2025 in the city of Columbus, our deputies have responded to 16 mental health-related calls, 37 welfare checks, and have put 11 individuals on emergency commitment holds to go to the hospital to be evaluated. So, these calls can range from anything from individuals with suicidal ideations, somebody in crisis, substance abuse disorders, homelessness, or even people who just can't simply take care of themselves. So, having this embedded social worker really just kind of enhances the services that we're already providing. I will say our deputies do a really great job handling some of these calls themselves, especially over the years. Legislation has changed some of our post-licensing mandates, where during that licensing cycle, we are required to complete training on crisis intervention, mental illness, dealing with individuals with autism, conflict resolution and related topics. But a lot of times, law enforcement response is a little bit more enforcement-based, or it's constricted due to, you know, the volume of calls for service. So, being able to have an embedded social worker, being able to follow up and actually have some case management, we're hoping will really reduce repetitive calls for service. I did want to highlight a couple of calls, though, that just highlight how well our deputies do on these. On April 3rd and 4th, at a group home on Potomac Street, deputies responded to two separate incidences, one on April 3rd, one on the 4th, involving the same resident. The first time, the resident was attempting to light his face on fire and wanted to get hit by vehicles. And in both instances, the deputies were successfully, were successful at de-escalating the situation, and they facilitated a voluntary transport for a mental health evaluation. I also wanted to share, and I did provide a flyer in the packets provided, that the Coon Lake Shop Open House is coming up on July 31st. So, this is the newly completed building for Coon Lake, or for the county highway and, and the park shop. So, it's an updated facility and a great opportunity for the community to come and see the vital role that they play on the east side of the county, keeping our highway and park systems looking good. I also provided a flyer for Alexander House's annual Hope Fest. Alexander House is one of our community partners. They provide services from shelter to legal advocacy to victims of domestic and sexual violence. Every fall, we have an annual walk to help bring awareness to the topic, and then that leads into October, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I also added, we did a scam prevention workshop a couple of months ago. We hosted one at our sheriff's office. This was put on by investigators within our patrol division. That was very well received and well-attended. We are now hosting two additional workshops, and that flyer was also placed in the packet. And then on September 23rd, the sheriff's office is having our annual open house, and that is from 4:00 P. M. to 7:00 P. M., where we invite the community into the sheriff's office. We have a lot of exhibits and demonstrations set up to share with everybody. Any questions on the general updates? All right, we'll turn it over to the calls for service report, and I provided some statistics to everybody. But overall, the calls for service were slightly up, which is pretty typical for spring and summer months. We did see a 17% increase in calls for service between quarter one and quarter two. So, we're pretty much tracking on point to what we saw last year at this time. And I always like to look at the call volume overall in comparison to the contract coverage times from 2:00 P. M. to 2:00 A. M., just to make sure that the coverage is sufficient for the calls. And this last quarter, we only had 24%, 24% of calls that fell outside of our contracted service time, which were handled by the countywide cars or neighboring contracts. So, that does tell us that the bulk of the calls for service are within our contracted hours, which is good. And then overall, deputies had four felony arrests, 13 gross misdemeanor arrests, four misdemeanor arrests, and issued 27 citations. We'll kind of break that down now into different, different crime types, starting with burglaries and thefts. As I indicated, there were no burglaries this last quarter. And I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Bertina to talk about some of the theft calls.
Hello, I'm Deputy Matt Bertina. So, on April 4th, deputies responded to a theft in progress at Ronnie Ace's Casino. A customer reported that his wallet had been stolen after he left it on one of the tables. Security located the suspect, who was still on scene, and they also recovered the stolen wallet from a bathroom trash can. The victim reported $80 missing. Surveillance footage showed the suspect taking the wallet, appearing to remove cash, and then taking the wallet with him into the bathroom. Suspect admitted to taking the wallet, but then he invoked his right to remain silent when he was asked about the missing money. Stolen cash was not recovered. Suspect was arrested. Suspect was arrested and booked for misdemeanor theft, as well as trespass from the casino. On May 13th, deputies responded to a report of internal theft at Running Aces Casino, where a former employee allegedly used a company credit card to make numerous unauthorized purchases totaling $8,700 about. Suspect is accused of falsifying invoices to conceal personal purchases. That employee had been terminated, and the business is interested in criminal charges. Supporting investigation is ongoing in that one. On June 16th, a resident in the 18200 block of Tulane, I want to say, street, reported the theft of high-value marine electronics from his boat, including a Garmin LiveScope screen and pole valued at nearly $8,000. The thefts occurred sometime over a four-day period, and there are no suspects or video footage. Evidence swabs were collected from the area where the equipment was connected, and the investigation remains active pending any further leads or identification of serial numbers, and that's also assigned to investigations and waiting on that lab result.
Thank you. And then we had a total of two assaults, so I'll just highlight one of those. On June 13th, deputies responded to the report of assault on Howard Lake Drive, in which a female reported being physically assaulted by her former partner at the residence. The deputies arrived, the suspect had fled prior to their arrival. However, the victim did have visible injuries. She provided a statement and was cooperative with the investigation. Cops alert was issued on the suspect, and he was later picked up and arrested for felony, and that was based on his prior convictions. So if you have prior convictions, it enhances, and he reached the felony level. So yeah, he was taken into custody, and the victim was offered services. We did have three damage to properties this past quarter. One of them was on June 20th, there was a mailbox, damage to mailbox at the 9300 block of Howard Lake Drive. And then later on, deputies also responded to a property damage call at a residence on 167th Lane. Basically, two unknown individuals were seen on home surveillance, footage approaching the residence with one of them trying to kick in the garage door. The suspects were unable to make entry, but they did flee on foot. Their identities were not known to the homeowner. At this point, we have also been unable to identify them. The damage was estimated to be about $400. So that case also remains open pending identification of those suspects. Moving on to traffic, deputies made 288 traffic stops, and I will turn it over to Deputy Bertina to talk about some of the proactive work done by our deputies.
All right. On April 8th, 2025, a routine traffic stop at the Holiday Gas Station led to deputies finding methamphetamine and opium. On April 14th, deputies located a vehicle in a ditch off of West Freeway Drive in the 15300 block. There are two 23-year-old males outside the vehicle. Through investigation, the driver was eventually transported to the Sheriff's Office for a breath test, which yielded a .20 BAC, which is pretty good over .08. May 16th, I located a suspicious vehicle parked after hours in our city park. The driver was found asleep in the driver's seat with his keys on the floorboard. I observed signs of impairment, clear slurred speech, bloodshot eyes, and the odor of alcohol. He thought he was in St. Paul. The driver admitted to drinking. He performed poorly on field sobriety tests. A PBT, which is the roadside test, got him at .173 BAC, and a later breath test confirmed it at .15. He already had a revoked driver's license, and his dog was given over to animal control. He is arrested and booked into the Anoka County Jail for a fourth-degree DWI, and his vehicle was locked and left in the park. Charges were forwarded to the city attorney's office. On June 24th, Deputy Gruy was doing stationary patrol in the median of Lake and West Freeway. He observed a vehicle jump a curb, so he attempted to initiate a traffic stop. The vehicle fled at speeds exceeding 100 miles per hour with all of his lights turned off, not the deputy but the suspect, and drove recklessly through residential areas, including blowing stop signs and crashing into multiple mailboxes. The pursuit entered the city of Centerville, where deputies successfully executed a pit maneuver. The suspect then ran the squad car before he was boxed in and taken into custody at gunpoint. The driver was canceled, I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher this, imminical to public safety, meaning he has a lot of prior DWIs, meaning he's unsafe to drive. So he had a bad driver's license, showed signs of alcohol impairment, and he provided a breath sample of .162 BAC before he refused all additional testing. He was booked for felony fleeing, DWI refusal, and driving after cancellation. There was also property damage to two mailboxes and multiple squad cars. So this is just really highlighting how important citizens are anywhere, not just Columbus, but anywhere. They call in complaints, that gives us a reason to look into a certain area. I'm not everywhere at once, and when I get a call for a traffic complaint, I can start checking that area, and I have had numerous successful DWI arrests from citizen complaints. So it's always important to call in if you think it's not right. On June 20th, Deputy Gruy responded to a reckless and possibly impaired driver on Broadway and Furman. Reporting party had observed the suspect driving on the shoulder, crossing into incoming traffic, and traveling the wrong way through the roundabout. The suspect vehicle attempted to evade law enforcement twice. The vehicle reached speeds up to 86 miles per hour and was eventually located in the dead end of Industry Northeast. The driver showed clear signs of intoxication and admitted to consuming alcohol. He refused field sobriety testing, consented to a PBT, which registered .158 BAC. Once transported to the Sheriff's Office, he refused the formal breath test. He was charged with third-degree DWI refusal to submit to testing and booked into jail. And again, the reporting party had observed him driving on that shoulder, crossing incoming traffic, and going the wrong way on a roundabout, all very good indicators of impairment that we do see a lot.
Thank you. And I just wanted to highlight, too, out of those 288 traffic stops, I know the citation number appears lower, but these are the types of arrests and tickets that we want to be giving. So a lot of times, the other traffic stops, they're really just about educating the public. We don't want to be, nobody wants to spend their money on the highway, right? So a lot of times, if somebody just gets caught going over the speed limit a little bit, they don't have a lot of priors, or maybe they pass on the shoulder. We like to just educate them on the purposes of why these laws are put into place, and then utilize our citations and our arrests for getting the fentanyl and the methamphetamine and that stuff off the streets. So, but thank you for highlighting those calls. I do have another call that I wanted to talk about. It falls into the quarter three, but it's more of a public safety awareness piece, especially in the summer months. But on July 19th, we did have a jet ski incident that occurred on Coon Lake. We had three adults all on a jet ski, not wearing life preservers. That jet ski ended up capsizing, and then they were rescued by bystanders. So I just wanted to put that piece out there just as a safety and public awareness. Deputies just issued warnings and obviously educated them on the importance of water safety, but I just felt like that was more fitting for tonight's presentation versus waiting until I'm back in October. So any questions on what we've prepared for tonight?
I got a question. Matt, were you the one, they had a chase that went over Broadway, the roundabout there?
Was that a motorcycle?
I don't know. I just seen it looked like the oil.
So I haven't chased anyone. I have not been engaged in a pursuit in the last quarter. However, there was a pursuit that started a couple counties north of us on I-35 that ended up terminating on Broadway and Kettle River Boulevard with no issue. He was on a motorcycle fleeing for sure from Shisago County deputies, and Anoka County deputies arrived and assisted with the scene since it ended in Columbus. However, that one, I think he went back and forth a lot from the Broadway roundabout up into Linwood even, and Stacy, or Wyoming, I mean. So that might be the one.
Well, I just looked at, you could see where the oil pan went over, made the mark.
On the roundabout?
You probably looked at it. Do you see a lot of young men liking to go over the roundabouts?
I have personally not seen anyone go over the roundabout. That would be, I would certainly have a discussion with them about that. That being said, we do stationary patrol, especially around Lake and West Freeway, which, as you guys know, is next to the casino and the interstate. That's a good spot to see the traffic that is not just in the main city, not saying that we don't do patrol elsewhere, but that's a good stationary patrol spot. And I have had people almost hit my squad car on the roundabout, which you should not be going onto the middle of the roundabout. They almost hit my squad car, and they end up being DWI.
Wow. I have one more question for you, Lieutenant. National Night Out, are you going to have both the deputies on that night, or?
No, we just have the one, and then anybody else who has volunteered to come in and work that night. So we have a lot of command staff members and reserve officers that volunteer to come in as well.
So you're going to stop at a few houses there, Matt?
I unfortunately never work Mondays or Tuesdays.
You don't?
Deputy Gruy will be out, though.
Deputy Gruy will be here.
Dan, then?
Yes, yep.
Jessica, do you know when the list of the Columbus parties will be posted on your website?
I put an email into Laura Landis today asking, and she must be out of the office because I have not heard back.
All right.
I was anticipating that that might be asked, so I will, once I get that answer, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, I hope to see you down at the park. Well, you won't be there, Matt, but.
Unfortunately.
Maybe Dan. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mayor, to the deputies, as far as that roundabout goes, what would be the proper way, then, to proceed if you're riding a snowmobile in the winter?
In general with a snowmobile?
Yeah, like at that roundabout right there. So that has been confusing, and actually, maybe either you or another deputy a couple winters ago waved their hand at me like, get off there, right? I was at the top waiting to proceed across, but it's, you're either crossing, what, potentially two lanes of traffic, otherwise you could just shoot right up and over, right? Snowmobile safety never taught you that? How to pursue through a roundabout, right? Because it wasn't a thing when I was a kid.
We do have recreational deputies. That might be a good question we can reach out to them about.
And I can certainly, Deputy Abler is now in our rotation, so I can bring that up to him. He's working.
Can I bring it up? Because I'm not the only one that I've seen do it. It's like a common thing, right, in Anoka County?
And I'll be frank, I honestly don't know what the proper way is. Obviously, safety is paramount. That's the most important. That being said, I'm certainly more concerned when it's a vehicle going over the roundabout. I'll bring that up to the recreational deputy.
Yeah, just because.
Try to get an answer.
To not know and then get a ticket for it, would that probably be a warning initially, right?
It is dependent on which deputy is stopping you or which officer.
Sure, sure. Yeah, this one just looks like, get, put the wind on, get out there. Fair, fair.
Fair enough.
Yep.
Is that considered a confession?
Hey, I'm fine, I did it.
I know what the statute of limitations is on that.
Yeah. It's been a while.
It's a pain to me.
People make mistakes.
This is Jenny. I have one question. So I know that as of July 1st, we had some changes, I believe, to motorcycle law. Is that correct? So I know that because when people renew their licenses, they don't necessarily get educated on some of the laws and changes. Is there anything we can do social media-wise? I like to share posts from the city and the county, that, especially because I think today I had a motorcycle come between myself and another vehicle, which I believe is now legal. And so is there any potential to maybe create some posts or something like that so we can educate our residents on some of those changes?
Did our community relations coordinator put something on Facebook?
I think, I think our Sheriff's Office has something.
Let me look into that, and then I'll forward you whatever we have, and you can feel free to share it and post it wherever you need to.
I do know, yes, lane splitting and lane filtering is legal. It is only when safe to do so, and I think it's up to 15 miles per hour. There is caps on that. However, everyone is going to see that more, and you don't expect it, even if it is legal. It's something, you don't expect a motorcycle to come up behind, next to you. But it is legal to do so when safe. That's the main thing for motorcyclists, anyone listening.
But I agree, because if you didn't see it on the news, it's hard to, you know, we don't get the bulletin on that. I found out about it because my registration's due on my vehicle, and there was an insert in the envelope that I got in the mail, and I was like, wow, this is coming up, and I'm in law enforcement, and I had no idea until I opened that, that that law was even coming.
Right, and I know, this is Jenny, so I know even with the zipper merge, that was a really big deal a few years ago, and I know a lot of residents, not just Columbus residents, but in general, people have a hard time with some of the sharing of things like the roadway. So just to try to educate people is important, so they try to be more cautious of it, especially motorcyclists.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Nothing?
Nope.
Scott, do you have anything?
Nothing from me, thanks.
Well.
All right.
I guess, well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
We appreciate your work there, Matt.
Of course.
Dan?
Dan L. T. Slav.
Lieutenant?
Thank you.
Love to see you on National Night Out.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You, too.
Next item on, Item C is number four, is the City Council Workshop Meeting Date Changed, page 18.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The regular City Council Workshop Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, at 5:30 p.m. at the Columbus City Hall. This date conflicts with the Night to Unite program, which is scheduled for the same date as the workshop meeting. Staff is going to request council consideration of rescheduling an alternate date of Monday, August 4th, 2025, for the workshop meeting to resolve the meeting date conflict, or August 7th, 2025 is an alternate date to that.
Anybody want to make the motion?
Is there one or the other that works better for everybody? I mean, either is fine with me. Either of the proposed dates is fine with me.
Yeah, I thought we talked about that in the workshop, though, didn't we?
I don't remember.
Thought we did, that we changed it over to the fourth.
Okay. Then I am, this is Janet. I would move to approve the rescheduling, excuse me, of the date of the August 5th, 2025 City Council Workshop Meeting to Monday, August 4th, 2025, at 5:30 to avoid a conflict with the Night to Unite activity scheduled for the same August 5th date.
This is Jenny, I second.
Okay, we got a motion that's been seconded. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Scott, aye.
Ron, aye, passes unanimously. Go on, item number five, Set Agenda for August 4th, 2025 City Workshop Meeting, page 19.
The City Council Workshop Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, now August 4th, 2025, at 5:30 p.m. The following items are recommended for discussion. City Hall renovation needs. There's an item two here, says Planning Commission, Internal Member Appointment if Required. I think that's already been taken care of. Outstanding escrow claims that we want to discuss with the council on how we want to handle those. And then the Pack Your Lunch item, the 2026 Budget Discussion. If you have any other items you'd like to add, we can see what we can do to work those in.
I have one other thing for consideration, and that would be a review of the City Administrator Review Process. So that was one of the things that was baked into this new process, is that we would review the process, make changes as required, and then it would be set to go for the following year. And I would also like to just add a discussion of City Administrator Goals. So if there's time to do those two things, I would like to add that to the agenda.
Scott, do you have anything?
Nothing to add.
We'll add that to it. No questions on that? All right. Then I'll make a motion that we move to approve the agenda for August 4th, 2025 City Council Workshop Meeting, as presented in Item C, Point 5, of the July 23rd, 2025 City Council Meeting Agenda and Packet, to add what councilperson Janet said on the reviews and all that, et cetera, et cetera.
Perfect. I will second it.
We got a motion, got it seconded. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Scott, aye.
Ron, aye. Go over to Section D, Consultants, Liaisons, and Staff Report. City Engineer, Brian.
Brian Bachmeyer, Consulting City Engineer. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no reports this evening, but I'm available to participate in the discussion under the Administrator's Reports regarding the Hornsby Project and the Golf Course, or the Tennis Court Project, so.
Thank you. The next city attorney, Megan.
Yes, well, I have one small update, and that is just where we are with the cannabis rollout in the state of Minnesota. So as you are all well aware, we adopted a cannabis licensing ordinance and zoning requirements for cannabis-based businesses in the city of Columbus in advance of what we expected a licensing process to kick off in January of this year. And that process was delayed, but on June 5th, the first But on June 5th, the first social equity licenses were, that lottery took place for retailers and also for the lottery for suppliers. So those are cultivators, manufacturers, and really people who are making the supply of goods to sell. Happened on June 5th. On July 22nd, all of the retailer licenses will open up, and that's when you can expect a sort of increase in terms of the number of the folks who are going to be engaging with the city. So I've provided the council with the Office of Cannabis Management's new guide for local governments. Just a couple of things to call out. The OCM has really encouraged all retailer applicants to reach out to cities in advance of submitting formal applications. So they should be working with your planning staff to work through a potential retail license and location optimization. But then at the time that a retailer has a license that's been awarded by the lottery and has a location in mind, then they're going to submit to the city through this Acela software that the state has selected. And that will be the mechanism that the city utilizes to authorize the location from a zoning perspective. And so you all may recall that we talked a lot about this preliminary application versus the final zoning application. And we elected to remove sort of this reference to a preliminary application from our code. And this is the reason why we did that, right, is because there is actually going to be a state process for us to be able to verify that an applicant for a conditional use permit has a valid license and for us to do an initial zoning review. Once that happens, the staff will enter that information into the Acela software. There will be further state process, and then and only then was an applicant going to come in for a conditional use permit. So we made a guess, an educated guess, on how this process would work, and we guessed correctly, which is great. So at this point in time, we do not need to make any changes to your licensing ordinance or to your zoning ordinance in terms of process for your applicants, but we should see those, those applications to cities for conditional use permits in particular should be picking up through the fall here.
Scott has his hands up.
Yep.
What?
Scott has his hand up.
Scott?
Yeah, yeah, hi. Just one question. Can you spell Acela, so I could just look it up myself? Glad I asked. I wouldn't have gotten it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. It's sort of like the train, right? The Acela train. The Amtrak train with an extra C. And there are, and the process and the sort of recommendations of the state are outlined on page 11 of this guide for local governments. And Scott, your hard copy, I'll send you an email with it, but your hard copy is here at City Hall as well.
Okay, I imagine that'll be on their website, too, correct?
Absolutely. Just recently updated.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you, it's been really confusing to me when I've heard about the tribes being allowed to open up a certain number of retail shops outside of tribal lands and what the process would be for that. I thought I read that that would be in addition to however many we had approved, that it doesn't, you know, so if we say we would allow three in Columbus, theirs wouldn't count towards that three. Am I understanding that right? Or can you just speak to that a bit?
Yes, so it's our understanding that the tribes have a special exemption from the local government requirements. And so that would be in access of the three licenses, for example, that would be available in the city of Columbus.
And with their retail shops already open at Malax and Hinckley, St. Cloud.
Or at least they're working towards St. Cloud.
I think they're building a big growth facility in Hinckley, too. They just didn't in Malax. Pretty big.
That all you have?
That is all I have.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You know, before we go on here, Jack, this person on the screen named Chris has had his hand up. Do we acknowledge that, even though the open forum's done?
I think, Mr. Mayor, that's actually the mouse.
That's, yeah, this is just to.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
The hand should probably be yellow.
Here, I've been looking at that the whole time. And it would disappear, then it would come back. Thank you. Thank you. We'll go on to, the next one is mayor's or city councils' report, item number three. Jenny, do you have anything?
This is Jenny, yes. Two updates. I had, Coon Creek had their watershed meeting on July 14th. Nothing to report there. On July 17th, Fall Fest had its meeting. We can confirm that on Saturday, we actually were able to secure a band, so we will have the Rockin' Hollywoods performing that day. So we will have some updates coming over the next few weeks, and confirming the website had initial updates done and completed today as well. So thank you to Aaron for that. That is all I have for updates.
Thank you. Janet, do you have anything?
Nope. I'll talk about the personnel committee under that item.
Okay. Rob?
Planning commission is all I have, so I believe I'll do that under six.
You wait till that comes up?
Yeah.
And I have nothing other than my park board, and I'll wait till that comes up, which is next. Item number four, Parks Board's report. This is kind of a two-phase.
Mr. Wendell.
Yeah. Oh, Scott, I usually have you beside me. Do you have anything to say?
No. I'm good. No report.
I didn't see the hand, so. Thank you.
Any longer?
Back to the park board, item number four, under D. This will be a two-phase. Jack will give the talk about the tennis courts, because he wrote up a nice report on it. At the meeting, it was pretty well attended, as is noted in Jack's report. They did bring up a couple issues about, about having another satellite there in the wintertime out in the park. That issue was brought up. I don't know if we ever came to a conclusion on that. And then the other item that was talked about was adding four more garbage cans to the park, which was voted on and approved. So other than that, I'll leave that go until your report comes up, okay, Jack? Thank you. Item number five is a personnel committee report, and that's Janet.
So I would just, this is Janet, for AI's sake. I would just refer council to the memo that was passed out tonight. The personnel committee report from our interview with a planning commission candidate. This is Mr. Andy Heinen. He submitted his application in mid-July, and we interviewed him yesterday. He moved to Columbus just a little bit shy of five years ago from Blaine, lives in the Thernbeck Phase II development on 172nd Court, and he owns also six and a half acres off of Broadway and 180th that he uses for hunting. So he learned of this opening from following Jenny on social media, so thank you for putting that word out there. You just got us, potentially, our next planning commissioner. He has a degree from Mankato State University, majoring in law enforcement and park and recs with an emphasis in natural resource management, and worked for eight years in Minneapolis as a park police officer, and prior to that at Oak Park Heights prison in the Department of Corrections. He currently is working part-time for Complete Performance as a personal trainer and a coach. Serving on a local government board is new for him. His father served on the planning commission in Sauk Rapids and on the city council, and then later on the county board. So he, he's heard a lot about it, but he hasn't actually done it, and is excited to try it out. He enjoys the rural aspects of Columbus and wants to help preserve that rural nature while keeping the city growing in the right direction to generate revenue and keep, keeping taxes affordable. And we talked about the time commitment that it takes to be at a planning commission, and he felt that he would have the time to serve and would be able to devote the time necessary. So the planning, or I'm sorry, the personnel committee unanimously endorses his application, and I'll take any questions, otherwise I can make the motion to approve his appointment. Any questions?
Nope.
Nope, okay. So then, let's see, does Jack have a motion here? Yes. So I, this is Janet. I move to approve the appointment of Andy Heinen to the city of Columbus Planning Commission to fill the vacated seat of Lynn Carver Quinn, which expires on December 31st, 2025.
Well, Rob, I'll second.
We got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion, any other questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Scott?
Aye. Scott, aye.
And Ron, aye. The motion passes unanimously. We'll go on to item number six, the planning commission report by Rob.
Yeah, thank you, Ron. So I was the planning commission liaison for last meeting and the future meetings here for the quarter. We had a public hearing for the Hidden Park. Takeaways from that, adjoining neighbor showed interest in possibly purchasing that parcel, asked who, who else was going to be offered up to. I explained in the past how we typically had offered it, and I didn't know that that was a process for sure we were going to follow, but we'd offered it to adjoining landowners, and they seemed happy about that. They asked about whether we're going to get it perk tested. They said there's lots of wet ground, unusable ground there that likely this year is flooded. Like I said, asked about the process on that. There wasn't, there was, I believe, there was only one person on it, Jack, that showed up to ask questions. They brought their whole family. The next thing was on the Northwest Quad. There was approval of a zoning request change from General Commercial to include mixed use. Harper Family Wedding Venue, there was a big turnout for that. The Harper Family wanted to host four-hour wedding events, up to two a day, possibly on both Saturday and Sunday, up to 10 of those a year. Some of the commissioners' comments on that were issues around parking issues, how they can only park on one side of the driveway. There was reference to possible alcohol use and how that be managed, in which the applicants simply said they would ask them to leave the venue. But the public hearing then was open. The neighbor to the east strongly opposed the idea, security concerns, people smoking cigarettes, Carlos Avery being adjoining, and possible fires due to people doing so. Neighbor to the west, concern about 10 weddings in a four-month span, noise issues, effects it might have on sale of houses, questioned if 50 people, including staff, as well. 10 other nearby neighbors from the neighborhood or more. They had concerns about traffic issues, increased need of maintenance on the dirt road, as well as excess use of the tar road. You could get there two different ways. Concerns of kids being run over, concerns of them just finally feeling like they had a safe neighborhood again due to dog issues in the past. Questions about how are they going to maintain people drinking beforehand and them traveling down their roadway as it is used heavily by families. Neighbors did ask, and I said I'd bring it back, if more than just the certain footage amount of people that are adjacent to that property line could be notified. I think we had the similar issue on, it was 170th, where it was only the cul-de-sac issue where it went into Thernbeck, I believe it was 170th. They had concerns about it, too. I said it's come up before. We could talk about it, so maybe it's something we talk about in a workshop in the future. But this ultimately was voted down with all commissioners voting for no approval of the venue. And then, as stated in our document here, they did pull their application, so. That's all I got. Questions at all? I think most people were either listening or here, yep, so.
Very good. Thank you, Rob. We'll go on to item number seven, Public Works Report, Truck Fed, pages 21 through 56. Public Director made it back in time.
I did. We have, had a list station problem that I thought we had cured, but it wasn't, so I ended up going back out there and having to wire in a new motor starter and a couple other little things. So hopefully, knock on wood, everything is back in operating form. So, Mr. Mayor and council, tonight I want to talk about the potential purchase of a new plow truck. We have a 2006 Sterling plow truck that is obviously 20 years old. And on our capital improvement plan last year, we had that truck on there for a 2026 purchase. I'm bringing it forward tonight because of the timing that it takes to buy equipment today. The lead time is a year and a half-ish. So I've done this in the past where we kind of talk about it, and, you know, I shoot for approval to purchase something early, and then that lead time comes up, and we don't pay till the calendar year that the budget's approved for. So what I'm looking for tonight is to get approval to purchase a new truck. What we are looking at would be a 2026 Mac. That would be a match to the two that we currently have, a 2016 and a 2020. We like to do, you know, we like to buy all of our equipment as the same, so they match. If you get out of one truck, get into another, the ergonomics are the same, the controls are the same, all of that stuff is very standard. So we like to do that. With that, the contract would be with two separate vendors. So Boyer, or not Boyer, sorry, Nuss Equipment sells Mac, cab, and chassis. And then they are a state contract vendor. Then you go to another vendor, Towmaster, state contract vendor, and then they do all of the upfittings. So they put plows and wings and underbody plows and boxes and lights and Sanders and all of the other stuff that make it look pretty. The cab and chassis on state contract is $139,150.82. The Towmaster outfit is $179,340, for a total of $318,490.82. To put that in perspective, we bought a new truck in 2019. That was $207,000, if I remember off the top of my head. So the price of equipment is skyrocketing. I'm not sure how to manage that, but, you know, we talk about that every year at budgeting. So what I'm looking for tonight is some discussion and a hopeful approval for me to move forward with purchasing this truck. And for that, I'll open up to anybody's questions.
This is Janet. So in the motions here, I think the dollar figure got cut off, but you quoted a total figure that's different than what's in the memo. Can you just tell me what that total figure is? Okay.
Yeah, I saw that, too.
And then my other question is, in the memo, it talks about how the sale of the 2006 truck would generate about $41,000 in revenue. How do you, how do you know that?
You take a guess.
Okay.
So what we would do is we would put that out at the surplus auction like we normally do, right? We would put a minimum bid on there of, call it $25,000. You know, we'll pick a number, right? We're going to go out and look around a little bit and try to see what other equipment's selling for, but we kind of did some talking already, and, you know, you always have your hope number that is going to be considerably higher than what your minimum is, right? It's a nice truck. The downside of this truck, one, is 20 years old. It has just shy of 37,000 miles on it. We don't wear them out with mileage. We wear them out with just wear and tear. They go out during the ugliest times of the year. We put salt in there. It's very corrosive. It's hard on things. And, you know, we work them really hard. So, you know, all of that said, if you look at it, it looks like a nice truck. But, you know, they don't make Sterlings anymore. They're hard to get parts for. So now you start running into some other issues, too, you know what I mean? And at 20 years, you know, we've, we've well exceeded what we're saying is the life cycle. It would be a good truck for somebody else, so we put it out on, in auction site. And they take pictures. They put it out for auction. It sits out there for roughly two weeks or whatever, and people bid on it. And, you know, we hope that it sells for more than what we put out for the minimum and that we make decent money on it. Now, I want to also clarify that $318,490.82, there's tax and license on top of that, too. So we hope that the sale of the 2006 offsets the cost of the tax. the cost of the tax and license plus some of this cost. So it is truly a guess to answer your question, though, Janet.
Okay.
We don't really know what they're going to go for, but make a number and hope.
Yeah, a lot of that is based on what we've seen for bids for other trucks in the past. Those prices are continually going up, but that's generally what we use as the starting point to approximate what we may receive for that vehicle.
So then my other question is, so from the memo, what I'm gathering is you want to push this up a year just because this is an old truck and you don't want to be caught short? Is that?
So technically, it's on our CIP plan for 2026.
Right.
I just want the approval to order it now because it's a year and a half lead time. So if we wait till, we won't pay anything for it today, right?
Right.
But basically, what it does is Nuss Equipment puts it on their order list, and we're basically bidding for a spot at the bodybuilder. And then, you know, once we secure that spot, then we're in their queue, and when they see the truck, then they start building it, which at this point right now, when I met with them, they said they're a year and a half out.
So is this going to be, I mean, I remember this came up, I can't remember what piece of equipment it was, but it came up with another piece of equipment where it was such a long lead time, and I think it was about a year and a half. I think we got it quicker than that, but I think that was the, but that was during the supply chain problem. And so presumably, there isn't that. There's other things now. But is this going to be like, do we need to change our budgeting for this so that we're looking like a year and a half to two years out, or is this unique to this plow truck?
I think at this point, the process that we've been doing is working well for us, right? Their vendors are allowing people to order early, and they don't charge anybody till the calendar year that it's budgeted for. So we wouldn't see a bill on this till we receive the truck. It could be 2027.
And then are you locked into a 2025 price?
We are locked into this price.
Okay.
And that's what we build to now. Barring, you know, in other years when, you know, the tariffs and stuff kind of changed things, you know, they were hitting people with some different pricing. But, I mean, they're going to be straight up with you on that. And for the most part, they've always been honoring what you've signed up for unless prices really went crazy like they were in, you know, 2019, 2020, that effect. They were doing some offset charging at that point because pricing was just, it went really crazy then.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ron. So I know, I believe it was with the road grader. Did we put that out to bid to local, our local contractors or something last time?
We did.
Okay. And it was the other truck we sold on min bid, the pickup truck?
So as a general rule, since I've started here and even well before I started here, our road graders have never left Columbus.
Sure.
So we buy them here, and Forest Lake Contracting generally has bought every road grader that has been up for sale here for years until the last one that we sold, and that one went to Rybeck. So, you know, a road grader or something like that, I would potentially talk to local contractors.
Okay.
And they are generally asking me, when are you selling? So there are certain pieces of equipment that people will come and knock on your door and say.
Is this one of those pieces or not so much? This is going to be a smaller city or township or something's going to buy it off auction?
A contractor more than likely.
Okay.
So a contractor that's going to plow other communities, you know, like Linwood, they used to do contract plowing. They didn't have their own trucks.
Okay.
So they would hire other people. So somebody like that type of contractor would buy a truck like this and they would, you know, go plow parking lots or other communities or, it could even be another municipality that.
Sure.
You know.
So more than likely at this, we'd put it on an auction?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Rob, to kind of give you an example, one of our adjoining cities sold a similar truck through the min bid process about a year ago. I think they got about $30,000 for it, and they sold it to Boyer Trucks, and now it's on the Boyer Truck for Sale site for $55,000.
And realistically, when you look at costs today, right, a new truck is $318,000, right? That makes the value of your used vehicle worth more, too, you know what I mean? Because there are people that aren't going to spend 318, but they'll spend 50. So, I mean, it's kind of all relative at some point. When you look at the price of vehicles today, a used vehicle is worth a lot more money than they used to be as well. So.
One of the other things, too, in purchasing the MAC truck is we can extend the life cycle these out another two or three years, as opposed to the Freightliners and the Sterlings that we used to purchase. They seem to last much longer, and we should be able to get more life out of them, too. So even though they're a little bit more expensive, you get better value out of them from a longer use period.
And, you know, going off of that, there's products that you can buy today that you couldn't buy years ago that help, help with the salt rusting process, you know what I mean, that you can put on there and it neutralizes that salt. And, you know, we do that regularly in the winter time. So, I mean, all of that stuff adds to the life cycle of a vehicle. Plus, you know, we're buying stainless boxes instead of steel boxes. So, you know, that's another thing that, you know, rots out because you have that salt right in that box all the time. So.
You have the original box on that, 2006?
Yes.
That's unusual.
You know, years ago, when we had the old Public Works building, they used to leave salt sand in there all the time because, you know, they, it wasn't convenient for them to load and unload, and that is not a practice that we do today. So we might load it, like if it's going to snow tomorrow, we potentially load a truck and get ready. So we, when we get here right away in the morning, we can just go, because it takes a little bit of time. But we don't leave salt in vehicles. Once it's done snowing, we clean them out, we wash them, and, you know, we wait for the next event. And sometimes, it's the next day. So, I mean, it's, you know, but they are way better than they used to be in that sense. Just, most people are buying stainless boxes, which don't rust out like the regular steel. So.
Do you have any questions, Jenny?
This is Jenny. So basically, what I'm understanding is, obviously, there are new techniques and new things that can help extend the life of the, I mean, obviously, what it looks like, I mean, the cost is extremely high, and I understand that. And no matter what, that cost is going to be high.
Yes.
Understand. But 20 years is pretty impressive for a vehicle.
Yes.
Are we expecting that potentially again for this new vehicle? I mean, the quality of vehicles in general have deteriorated a little bit over time compared to what was in the 90s and early 2000s. So I'm just curious what you think about that.
Yeah, there's no question these trucks will last, they'll last that 20 years for sure. And really, what it comes down to is maintenance. Are you doing the maintenance on there? Are you changing oil? Are you washing them? Are you fixing the leaks? Are you doing all of that stuff? And we do a really good job at that here. I mean, we are always making sure that, you know, the oils change. There's all of that stuff, you know, really comes into play. And I talk about oil, right? I mean, we change it every year. There's 36,000 miles on a 20-year-old truck. So, I mean, it's not like, it's not like we're running up on the, you know, I need to change my oil light because, you know, I've ran my 5,000 miles or whatever. We don't hit that. We do it once a year, you know what I mean? And, you know, the really key, though, is making sure that you wash them. And, you know, every spring, we take them over by the wellhouse, and we literally wash them with a fire hose. And you are trying to get in every nook and cranny to get all of that salt out of there. So you're, you know, trying to preserve them as long as you can.
This is Jenny. One more question. So we have the issue with the tennis courts as well, where the, what was budgeted does not meet what came in for our different quotes. Are you seeing like 10 to 15% increases? You're, I mean, so trying to potentially better match what that is going to look like, I think is important, just so we, you're able to get everything that you need. So can you speak to that a little bit? Just across the board, are you seeing increases of 10 to 15% annually? What does that look like?
In everything. And we're going to talk about that, too. So in our CIP plan, we have escalators in there to try to curb some of that and make it so it's not so drastic when we change that dollar value. And, you know, we started out years and years ago, I think, at about an $80,000 budget for a year for equipment, right? We're well exceeding that now. And, you know, what we've done in the past is add dollars to it. So, you know, maybe we add another $10,000 a year. And we've done that a couple of times. And then we started out with a 2% escalator, and now we're at a 4% escalator. And we're probably going to change that number again, you know, or we're going to ask to anyways because equipment is, I mean, as you see, I come in here, and, you know, these numbers are getting bigger and bigger every year, right? And I don't ever see it going back down, let's say that, right? I mean, you buy a vehicle that used to be $40,000, and now they're 80. So, I mean, it's going up in every market.
Scott has a question.
Yeah. Jenny, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Scott, do you want to answer your question? Ask your question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've got three. It's almost more statements than questions. First of all, I think, you know, being a part of Fleet Purchasing, one thing about lead times, I think you're right in a ballpark. I think you're correct, Jim. They're not going to go down, especially with looming federal EPA standards, that we in the public or private sector have been looking at lead times between 12 and 18 months. And I don't think that's going away anytime soon because of that. Second thing is, is I did look over the bid, and that seems right in a ballpark. I know it's sticker shock, but that seems right in a ballpark, what I would expect for that type of equipment. I'm not sure about the plow equipment, but certainly the chassis is right in a ballpark. And third, I did go onto the website while we were having our discussion. I'm frequently on that website and bidding and purchasing off the surplus auction website for Minnesota. They currently have two 2006 state plow trucks. They're tandem axle, not single axle. They don't appear in as good a shape, and they're at right around $10,000 with four days left. And typically, that would meet what Jim was talking about, our reserve of $25,000. Those trucks, a little bit bigger, but not in nearly as nice a shape, are going to go for at least that $25,000 reserve that Jim was talking about and probably more. So I think he's also right in a ballpark for what we could get for that in an auction.
Is that it, Scott?
That's it.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Can I make one other comment? It's not a question, but just like for the public, we put money aside every year towards these big purchases, these CIP purchases. So when we talk about the cost of a truck like this, it's not like, oh, next year, we're going to levy $300 and some thousand dollars to pay for it, which is why it's really, you know, good that you have the escalator in and stuff. But we put money aside for this so that we don't get hit between the eyes when it comes time to buy this. So just a point of clarification.
Yeah, that, I mean, all the equipment that we buy here, we pay cash.
Yep.
So, I mean, we, the city council has always been very gracious to, well, the residents and the staff to put that money away. And, you know, you budget a certain amount of money every year. It comes out every year. And then we just, we buy what we need. I do know other communities that they don't have a CIP plan, and they're going to buy a $300,000 dump truck, and they, that goes on to their budget. And their, you know, their budget is up and down, up and down, and ours is, you know, relatively stable all the time. And that makes it very nice for residents and also very nice for us to be able to plan on how we can manage equipment.
And to that point, too, I think some communities choose to borrow, to finance, you know, they get equipment bonds, and so then you're paying interest on top of that. So I'm really happy that we do not do that.
Thank you. Well, I know one thing. You look at a regular pickup truck. I looked at a one-ton, $78,000. That's just a pickup. So we get three times that size. So, sounds good. Anybody want to make a motion on this? Or are we done discussing it? Maybe not. Well, I'll make the motion. I, Ron Hanagraf, to, wait, where are you? To authorize the order of the 2025 MAC Granite 42 FRSA truck and the Towmaster package for the dump body, plow system and apparatuses for the combined cost of $318,000. It was $490?
Yeah.
$490.82.
I remembered 82. It stopped on 49 there. Everybody have that?
Yep.
Anybody want to second a motion?
Rob will second.
This is Scott.
Okay, Rob seconds it. There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any comments? Any discussion? Any questions? Hearing them, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Scott, aye.
Ron, aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And that is all I have for tonight.
I just have one question. Are you going to put the new logo on this truck?
We'll put a new logo on everything when you guys approve the logo.
We did approve the logo.
I don't know. I gave Aaron a list, and we talked about doing stuff, and I have not been directed to buy new logos.
We still have to bring back the compiled list of everything that's going to need to be updated so that you guys can evaluate whether you want to take that out of an existing fund or should we look at budgeting it for next year. So.
Yes, this one will have a new logo on there. By the time we get this truck, we will have everything re-logged.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll go on to item number eight, the City Administrator's report.
This is a report on the Hornsby-Urica Street project. City of Columbus and Forest Lake had agreed in principle to partner on the 1.35-mile Hornsby-Urica Street reconstruction project pending the approval of a 2025 state bonding bill for the Columbus share of the project cost. The current Columbus portion of the project is approximately 0.25 miles with an estimated cost of $762,000. The proposed financing concept for this project was based on the approval of the state bonding bill to pay for the City of Columbus cost of the project. That bonding bill was not approved, but the city is eligible to apply for a MINDOT Local Roads Improvement Program funding through an upcoming grant solicitation project. Conditions for the eligibility of that grant were part of a $47 million transportation bill that was approved by the legislature also in this year. The use of the funds boils down to the fact that if the Hornsby Street-Urica Avenue project proceeds with both portions, the Columbus and Forest Lake segments, at the same time, having a letting of the bid in August of 2025, Columbus would not be eligible to apply for the LRIP funds through the competitive solicitation process. The competitive LRIP grant is intended for upcoming projects and not to supplement projects that are already awarded and or underway. However, if only the Urica Avenue were, the Forest Lake portion, has a letting in August of 2025, the Hornsby Street portion is pulled out as a separate construction contract with a separate letting after LRIP awards are announced in March or April of 2026, Columbus would be eligible to apply for these grants. However, there's no guarantee that the Columbus project would be selected for funding. We do think we have a strong case to be considered for this grant. The City of Columbus will not be able to partner with Forest Lake on a joint project unless exceptions and exemptions from MINDOT requirements were approved for this particular situation. MINDOT was not open to allowance of exceptions or exemptions through their program requirements. This means that the City of Columbus, if they want to complete this remaining section, will have to bid and construct our project separately. The timeline for the grant application process and the grant award is solicitation of applications in September of 2025, application submissions in December of '25, and grant awards in March, April of 2026. We also have talked with the city administrator from Forest Lake regarding plans and specifications to be able to hopefully use those to lower our cost of that because this is not considered an eligible grant, eligible item. I'll be meeting with Mr. Stats here next week to go over that, plus issues regarding our wetlands credits that were approved, and we received that cost from the Rice Creek watershed. So at this time, staff is requesting authorization to apply for the local road improvement funds for the completion of the final quarter mile segment of the Hornsby Street as an independent project and negotiate use for wetlands credit funds within the limits of the LRIP program requirements and for any offsets to potential engineering costs with the City of Forest Lake. I might add, too, that the City of Forest Lake is going to be advertising their bids for this project probably the first of August, and that's what is the difficulty in us partnering with them to do this. with them to do this. And we can't use two LRIP grants for the same project, and a portion of Forest Lake's money for their grant is from this fund.
Any questions? Hearing none? Wanted, somebody want to make a motion, or?
This is Jenny, I can make.
Go ahead, Jenny.
This is Jenny. I moved to authorize staff to work through the Anoka County Highway Department and the city engineer to prepare a local roads improvement program, also known as LRIP grant application for the Hornsby Street project, and with the City of Forest Lake to the extent required on this project as presented in the staff report for this item.
There's a second?
Rob, second.
We've got a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Scott, aye.
And Ron, aye. The motion passes. In your court again, Jack?
Thank you, Ron. This is a memorandum and update on our tennis court project bids. The city authorized this project as part of the 2025 capital improvement plan to bid the project and evaluate the cost to see if we could actually do the work. So through Bolton and Make, we bid the project, took bids on June 17th, brought this to city council. City council had some questions about taking this to the park board for some additional input and to see if it can be combined with some other larger projects. And we also announced at that time, too, that there's a survey underway to determine what the preference is for use in that, whether it's tennis, pickleball, combination of. That survey is still being conducted, the results of that will be finished on July the 30th. So we met with the park board on July the 15th and reviewed the city council's discussion from our June 25th meeting with council. That meeting was to table the decision for the reconstruction of the tennis course in the city park. At the park board's public forum, six persons spoke regarding the use of options for the dual-court use of both pickleball and tennis. Of those that spoke, the comments were equally divided relating to the preference for the different uses and the difficulties encountered with pickleball and tennis play on the same courts. At the conclusion of the parks board conversation regarding the pros and cons of the bid alternate options and concerns of the two different users, a motion to table the decision on this subject was made and approved to allow further study on the topic and gather additional input on this topic based mainly on the survey that will be completed. The park board was advised that the project bid offer was only valid until July 31st, 2025, and postponing the decision to award the bid could result in delaying this work to 2026 or beyond. As an attempt to keep the project moving forward, staff informed the park board that they would contact the low-bid contractor and request an extension to bid offer for an initial 30 days. This would give the park board the additional time to analyze the results of the survey regarding the question of uses on the courts and schedule a special meeting to make a recommendation to council to consider at their August 13th, 2025 meeting. The park board was agreeable with this timetable, and staff has contacted the contractor regarding this extension to a bid award date. The contractor has agreed to the extension with no increase in the base or alternate project bids. The tennis court reconstruction project will be rescheduled for discussion at the August 13th, 2025 city council meeting and include any additional information collected between the park board meetings and this council meeting. So we will have a special meeting of the park board next week or the first week in August, go over those results of that survey, hear any further input, and then they will make their recommendation to city council on how they would like to proceed with this project.
Comments?
This is Jenny. I just wanted to acknowledge all of the residents that came last week. I went to the park board meeting, there were a lot of passionate residents of, between the pickleball and tennis court, or tennis fans out there. And then we had two other meetings last week as well, and I think we had almost 100 residents to city hall and online. So I just wanted to thank everybody for that.
I also like to make a comment that the park board, a pretty good group of people we have, because right after the meeting, a couple of them went over to Belts Park in Forest Lake to check out their new tennis court. They got two tennis courts with the pickleball lines drawn in, almost similar to what we have. And then they were heading down, I don't know if they went there, down to Hugo to look at theirs. So they're putting a lot of time and effort into it, so. It was a lot of people. We almost had to call security in between pickleballers.
I have, I have a question for Aaron. What kind of response are you getting from your survey monkey, or whatever it was, male chimp survey monkey, one of those?
Yeah, so in anticipation of that question, I quickly logged into survey monkey and realized that we've had 72 responses.
Oh, good, oh, good.
About a week and a half, so.
Okay, good.
Had 40 in the first eight hours.
Those are all the people that were here.
You can, you can keep logging in on that, can't you? Or?
Yeah, I don't know if there's any limit to the number of responses. However, I can weed out the ones that use the same IP address and only use one of their, of those multiple responses.
Oh, cool.
So Jenny, I attempted, so I did a test because we're trying to figure out, there was a second survey listed on the park, and so we, we got that figured out online. But I, I did a test and then attempted to submit a second one, and it wouldn't allow it, at least on that same computer. So I think hopefully it should keep it pretty.
So no stuffing the ballot box?
Right.
I know there's a lot of concern about that, some of the public, they didn't want the tennis people overload, you know, votes and whatever it be. Well, no other comments on it? We'll wait till the park board figures it out? Next item there, Jack?
This is the 2026 budget discussion. It's going to be a little bit different. The first part I was going to be, I gave everyone a handout of, this is the state, the report we file with the state auditor every year for our TIF district. It was in the paper, in case anybody had any questions. Janet brought this to my attention and asked if we would mention it and bring it up tonight. But this is the annual report we file every year with the state auditor for TIF District 111. And published, it also has to be published in the paper. The summary of the report has been given to you as a, as a handout material, and we're here to answer any questions you may have of any of the summary information that's included on this sheet. And generally, it's officially what it reports is what the tax increment was prior to development, what it is after development, how much has been expended, and when the official decertification date of the project is. So if you have any questions regarding these numbers, we're here to answer those for you.
So Jack, did you say that there's a, there's an explanation of this report somewhere? Because I don't see it.
The explanation would come from staff.
Okay, so, so I gave it to you because actually the two people that asked me the question left, but I know where to find them, so I can pass on the information. They wanted to know, they wanted me to explain it. I had not seen this report, so I thought I might have a pretty good idea, but I didn't trust my understanding of it. So could somebody just go through line by line and, and just tell us what these numbers mean? And then I can pass that on to the residents.
I'll take the first four, and then Cheryl will take the last four. The first four, the current net, net tax capacity. Tax capacity is determined by the property's valuation times its property classification. So in this case, the current valuation of this property is now about $11,200,000. We don't know exactly what it's been classified. Generally, it's in that 2% range. If you use this figure they're showing here, which is 300, I can barely read it, 315,880, that would be just a little bit more than that 2%, so that's pretty close. So if you take the valuation of the current property value and multiply it by the tax classification rate, that gives you the tax capacity of the property. The original tax capacity of the property was listed as $7,620.
And that was the lot?
That, that, that was the pre-development value.
That's the land.
So you, you can see what it is increased, the original, the captured net, net tax capacity, excuse me, that's the difference between the original and the current. So that's $308,000. And going with that, I'll turn the rest of it over to Cheryl, she's more familiar with those numbers than I am. But that's how those evaluations are derived.
I got that far, too, and then all of a sudden, it's like, whoa, I don't know what to do with the rest of these numbers.
So the principal and interest payment that's listed is $36,244, and that is 80% of the TIF revenue that we received from the county. So originally, we had received $45,306.66. Of that, 80% was eligible to be paid out to the TIF recipient.
So when you say that that's 80% of the TIF revenue from the county?
Mm-hmm.
Where does that revenue come from?
That's their property taxes.
So the property taxes that they paid, or they should have paid?
That they did pay.
That they did pay, okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then they get it back?
Yes.
Got it.
80%.
Yep.
And then the tax increment received in 2024. In 2024, we tackled prior-year TIF, so that number is a little bit higher than what it would normally be. I don't know if you remember going back. There was an issue with some of the requirements being completed. So in 2024, we had to go all the way back to the TIF increment received to 2020, and then we ended up being able to pay that out in 2024.
So what I wasn't sure on this is what the difference was between this tax increment received and the payment, the principal and interest payments that they got back.
So the tax increment received in 2024, that's actually 2020 through 2024.
So I know when, when we do our budget and we get all of the numbers from the county, this is always part of that report, or at least it had been in the past. And it goes up every year, up from the beginning to year seven, I think it is. So every year, this number goes up. I understood this number to mean that this is the property tax that would have been paid and gone into all the various different pots if not for the TIF. Because it's subtracted from our, from our, our tax revenue, at least in the reports that we used to get, just like, just like the fiscal disparities is. It was, it was handled kind of, at least in the reports that I remember seeing on the budget, it was kind of handled in the same way that the fiscal disparities, like if that program didn't exist, here's what we would have had in tax revenue. I thought that's what this number was, too, but again, I was not.
I can clarify that with Tammy on that sheet. I will ask Tammy about that.
Okay.
The $88,000 that was expended, that was actually paid to the TIF recipient. The month and the year the first tax increment was received was actually July of 2020. It will be decertified in 2028, and that's all we have for the report.
What's that last, that last little item? I didn't understand that either. Outside of the district, if fiscal disparities, option A applies?
I can check what option A is also with Tammy.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
I got a question, Jack. I, I wasn't around when this all started, but I thought that when people go under TIF, that the city gets paid for all its clerical and processing.
When, when Cheryl says 80%, we keep 20% of that money, and that's for administrative purposes. And essentially, it's for us consulting with Northland Securities to file these reports, that's a big portion of it. And then anything else we can use for administrative costs for our own use.
So this, this must cost a little penny to print, to put in the paper, that we get that deducted, it gets.
That, that would be part of our administrative cost to pay for these.
So Jack, I remember that the prior council who authorized all this gave that money back. We don't get, if I'm remembering correctly, we forfeited that 20%, and that went back to Bear Homes.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think that, that's, you know, there was an administrative fee that could have gone to the city, but that council declined it and gave it back to Bear Homes, is what I'm remembering.
Typically, though, that administrative fee is kept by the city to use to pay their administrative costs.
Yeah, I know, typically. I don't think it happened here.
Okay.
How do you know if it happened?
We'll have to go back, and I can look at the original TIF documentation.
I, I was at the meeting where they made that decision.
What?
I was at the meeting when they made that decision.
I thought that was a decision made on the asphalt company.
Nope.
I mean, not that it was, it was something else on that.
Yeah, that, we can get into that, too, but that isn't, this was, this was a request that was made by the, by the.
Council.
No, by the business, and the council granted it back to them. And, and I remember Elizabeth's face when that happened, because you could have picked it up off the floor.
Lot of money.
It is.
Yep.
Any other questions?
No, but that, thank you for going, going over that. It's, it's helpful. I mean, I get, when I was campaigning, I would get a lot of questions about this TIF. It is a source spot for several residents that we have this, so good to understand it.
Well, going on with the rest of the budget discussion, the 2026 budget is in preparation, and there are no handout materials for tonight, as we're still waiting for wage and salary, bond review, and fire department inputs for the budget. This information will hopefully be available and assembled for presentation at the August 4th, 2025 work meeting. With the exception of the items mentioned, the remainder of the budget items are completed. So once we get these inputs, we'll be ready to make that presentation. The reason we're not doing it now is because these inputs are going to account for about 40% of our budget. So I want to get it all done at once, so you don't have to go back and tinker and put a lot of placeholders in. So we meet with the fire board on 31st, we'll get their inputs then. We'll get something on wage and compensation here, hopefully in the next two weeks. And the other item is the. Well, it's the bond, we have a bond review, too, that Tammy's working on now, she'll get those. We had some issues last year with the filing of the bond reports that we weren't uncovered until we submitted those to the county. So we want to make sure those are perfectly correct, so we don't have to go back and revise anything again this year. So once we get those, we'll roll out the whole thing for you on the, on the 4th, and we'll start that process.
Any questions?
I want to point out what I submitted to the county last year was correct. It was an error from the previous years. So I just want to go over that with a fine-tooth comb. We need to look at some special assessment revenue. We need to look at some of the utility revenue. I want to make sure that we are exactly correct and we are staying on track before I give those numbers to you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. One, one other item, though, that I'd like to bring up here tonight, though, is what our city budget goals for other projects that we think need to be addressed. I mean, these could include things like talking about city hall renovation, what we hope to proceed, go further in our document management system beyond 2025. Our, making sure we have our IT service contracts included in this. The other thing we want to talk about is the collection of our delinquent utility connection, which is, to me, a very high priority. We also need to look at what, if we want to start setting aside any money for our comp plan costs, which are going to start coming up in about three or four years, depending on what firm we get and how much we're able to do in-house, could cost $60,000 to $80,000. And also, we want to let you know that next year, we plan to have that ClearGov budget tool. we plan to have that ClearGov budget tool ready to go. So this will be a simpler process to present, develop, and to understand with not only staff, council, but also the citizens. It'll be a much simpler process, and that's one of the big goals that we've had since we started this discussion last year. So if you have any ideas or anything else you want to discuss about budget goals, please let us know by the end of next week, and we can see what we need to do to address those in the next meeting.
Any questions, any comments?
Can I ask a question that's not related to anything that you just talked about? I should have asked it earlier, but it was part of the consent agenda. So it has to do with the resolution for the EDA. So my question is, it looks like by the resolution, the effective date is the 9th of July. So when does this actually start in reality? Like, our next meeting is?
It's already started.
It's already started.
Okay, so like.
Mayor will need to make an appointment before the next scheduled EDA meeting so that the new EDA can organize the bylaws and seek a third citizen representative.
And that will be on the agenda for our August 13th meeting to reflect that consideration.
Okay, and then my other question is, so if the two citizen members that are on right now are reappointed, do their terms start over? Or do they continue on with the same terms? Because they'll probably turn over and die if you tell them they're on for another seven years.
I would suggest that since they're already midterm and had been appointed for six-year terms, that they just allow or remain to fill out their term.
I like that idea. I just wasn't sure legally how it all worked out since we're forming a new EDA.
And their terms are still staggered, too, so that doesn't affect anything with that.
Okay. And then, do you want to say anything about soliciting interest?
Well, if anybody on the council that's interested in being on the EDA, let me know ahead of time.
Right, because there's two members, and you're one of them.
Yeah, I'm obligated, but if I don't hear from anybody, then I guess someone's going to be on it, so. But if you are interested, let me know, and then we'll be all set come August 13th.
Thank you.
We all done with that there? I'll go on item E, announcements and reminders. Local government officials meeting July 31st, 2025 at Bunker Hills Activity Center at 6:00 PM. Jack, I believe all of, most of us are going to that?
We won't be.
Huh?
We have fire board.
No, oh, no. Is it? Fire board's at 5 o'clock, right? Oh, wow. You're right. I'll have to regroup on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, because I suppose we got to drive those fire trucks over there.
Yeah, probably.
Give it back to Forest Lake. Or parking. We'll talk about that one afterwards. Item under NOKA County Sheriff's Office, open house. Coon Lake Highway Shop, open house. 5510 197th Avenue Northeast, July 31st, 2025, between 3:00 and 6:00 PM. City Council August Workshop Meeting, August 4th, 2025, at 5:30 PM. Night to Unite Parties at various locations in the city and Alliance Club-sponsored events at Columbus City Park. That'll be August 5th, 2025. Planning Commission Meeting on August 6th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. And City Council Meeting on August 13th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Did I mess up anywhere?
Perfect.
Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn or any other discussions?
This is Janet, I move to adjourn.
Come on, Scott.
Scott, you want to?
Why do I always have to second the adjournment? This is Scott, I'll second.
We got a motion on the floor. Ben seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Rob?
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jenny, aye.
Scott, I just know you tried to make a few motions or seconds, so I wanted to give you a shot.
Well, thanks for your consideration, Rob. I appreciate it, council.
What was your vote?
And Scott, aye.
Ron, aye. Meeting's adjourned at 7:50, whatever.
Reporting in progress.